Subway County Hospital District to complement the existing long-term care and clinic facilities. You know, that that represents a change in complexity that allows us to get better pricing. And then the affiliation with the other health tech hospitals, you know, although it doesn't come with any requirements allows you to upgrade your your tier within within a GPO that recognizes health tech. And then finally, when you're thinking about, you know, how does this work on the GPO side? They take a they they take a small margin off of every purchase made through the GPO. That's built into the quoted prices and it's paid to them by the suppliers. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't come back as accounting or as extra payments on the facility side. That's that's helpful in that, you know, it allows you to just manage your purchasing based on quoted pricing. But that, you know, that is how they make their money. We've negotiated with Vizient for a slightly non-standard component to that. And by we are really mean Jeff, this was something he worked on to return 10% of that, you know, that sort of per order charge that that they make their money on to the hospital as what's called a fee share. And in in our mind, that that's intended to provide a little extra cash flow to participate in some pay-to-play spending opportunities. But it doesn't come with that requirement. It's unencumbered cash back to the organization. And then it's it's worth noting that, you know, some GPOs charge a one-time startup or an annual membership fee. It's it's, you know, it's it's not uncommon. There's also individually targeted pay-to-play models, but that's that's not what we're discussing at this point. And the the GPO affiliation with Vizient does not come with a startup fee. Any questions before we move into our specific review of your existing supplies purchases?
Any questions from the group? Okay, Kendra, any questions from you?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. So what did we do here to to, you know, make a recommendation? Greg's been working with the team and reviewing all of their purchasing as well as par levels for the hospital day one opening. And so we took that list and Jeff actually went through every SKU. This is this is, you know, easier to do in some ways with a facility that's been operating for a long time because you just get you know, a data transfer for all that they've purchased and you know, essentially run it through the database as a as a direct match. While that can't be done here, Jeff took the time to go through every SKU on that list and was able to match 70 SKUs directly. Where where he wasn't able to match something directly generally that there just wasn't enough information on the existing list to be positive of the information we're looking at. And we felt that we got enough to be confident, you know, in what we're presenting. To be clear, we're looking at the hospital long-term care and clinic supplies together, you know, we do, we we know that we're going to continue purchasing, you know, as the hospital district as as a system. And so, you know, everybody is going to participate in what we call acute pricing, which is, you know, that that up tier as well as in the, you know, sort of size. The the size-based pricing with the that they you get through affiliation with health tech. And so Jeff compared existing prices to the prices that, you know, a member of our network is currently paying for those same SKUs and found an average 47% saving, which is, it's pretty surprising and I I wouldn't you know, I wouldn't guarantee that it's going to be a 47% reduction in supplies cost. But I do believe it's real and I'll I'll flip real quick to, you know, an illustration of what Jeff did. I I don't know that the details are particularly easy read, but down on the left, you're taking, you know, literally the item being purchased and the item member and going through and comparing the existing hospital price, you know, what we expect to pay to open the hospital on day one to what that price would be on the Vizient GPO. And so, you know, we could have, we could have a very substantial saving and we're confident confident at this point saying that we'll have substantial savings on supplies going through Vizient. We, you know, we want to caution that there's a lot of you know, national and global pressure on supplies expense right now. And you know, certainly GPOs help protect against inflation because they have contracted prices with suppliers. But, you know, they're they're not going to be able to fully protect against tariffs. And so we think, you know, we think that if we, you know, if we capture all of the 47% average that we've, you know, calculated on the 70 SKUs we were able to match one for one. And that's all we do, then that's, you know, that makes this worthwhile. But we believe that it will extend to, you know, essentially all purchasing done by the system. And that, you know, it should provide both relief from inflation and medical supplies through the rest of the year. And, you know, go further than that to, you know, help help bolster the bottom line a little bit as we get going. Jeff, is there anything I missed that you want to speak to specifically about our analysis and recommendation there?
No, I mean strictly, we're seeing the major differences alternate care pricing, which you're on historically with the clinics and against our acute care pricing base. So we'll need a little organization with the system. The the critical access hospital at the top, obviously, driving all of the acute care pricing down throughout the system. One thing I will mention on GPOs, just going back to the GPOs, the some of the differences are you you must use particular products or particular vendors in certain product lines with some of the GPOs. Vizient is a fully voluntary GPO. So your your physicians for your preference items, they have the ability. They have wiggle room, in other words, so you don't have to use specific vendors if you choose not to. So the the decision is still on the hospital, which is the way we like it. So but we do have the ability to tweak and get better pricing, as Patrick mentioned, based on spend and commitment volume. A combination of both are sometimes separate. So but these savings are real and they look, they look very nice. Well, I think that's about all I'll I'll add there.
And so that gets to where we go from here. I mean, you know, since the current GPO is non-exclusive, we can maintain that to make sure that there, you know, isn't anything strange. We certainly don't need to trip over our shoelaces trying to open the hospital. But the urgency here is to you know, get a contract with Vizient drawn up that allows us to start taking advantage of this pricing because we do think it'll, you know, we think it'll make a difference for the P and L as we go forward. With your approval, we'll work to contract with Vizient for start date. That's as soon as possible. And I've I've worked with, you know, Greg bouncing that language back and forth. The reason we don't have a contract with you today is that we are working with Vizient to get the, you know, Wyoming-specific venue and, you know, governing governing law language in. We don't think there's going to be an issue there, and that's already over at Vizient for review because Craig was able to provide us with those those paragraphs. And then once we, you know, once we get this going, Jeff's experience with Vizient, you know, really shines and he can continue to support your materials management department with, you know, with both the transition, you know, finding finding supplies that, you know, makes sense for the organization and meet physician preferences. And then, you know, working on capital purchases as they arise to to make sure that we're getting you know, both the best pricing. Generally, we're able to, you know, generally, we're able to get discounts through Vizient as well as getting credit for, you know, our capital spend as well as our op-acts with the, you know, with the GPO. That concludes prepared remarks. And I'll stop sharing so that you know, we can look at each other if we want to. But I'm open for any questions.
Thanks, gentlemen. I guess I have one question, and that would be, what does implementation look like? What's the timeframe? I mean, beyond our contractual agreement, what does the implementation look like for our group?
Jeff?
Yep, I I think, you know, we've we've estimated 90 days. We can probably get it done in less. Being in brand-new facility from the ground up complicates things a little bit because the vendors don't have it in their systems yet. So that'll be the big battle upfront, and that may take a little bit of extra time, but the we're we're already setting it up at Vizient in the system the way it needs to be. If all this works out, then we can just go and and I will say, you know, we can probably get a six-one effective date on the membership with Invisient. Then have a cushion probably until nine-one to go live with everything. So no reason to try to start changing products at opening. You go with what you've got and then we'll figure out from there, you know, what the better value is. There could be better quality products out there. We'll look at everything at that point and and make the moves in combination with your directors.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions from other board members? Or the team?
Mm-hmm. Same.
Doc, as medical director, have you? Do you have any questions about purchasing?
No, I'll leave that in your hands. Craig's hands.
So explain to me, just in brief, if you will, the non-exclusionary status with our current GPO. We don't, we don't have to go all in with one or the other. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so the current GPO is open. You have no contractual requirement. You know, your membership status with that GPO doesn't change, even if you switch all of your spend to Vizient. That's a really good thing because it means for opening the hospital, we don't have to think. We can, you know, where we can buy wherever we need to get the hospital open. Vizient is non-exclusive, which, you know, Jeff Jeff mentioned is important to us because it it allows for that, you know, one thing or multiple things that a physician just isn't comfortable using anything except the supply that they know. And we don't want to put physicians in a position where they're fighting with administration because of a GPO contract. At the same time, you achieve the best savings by committing to a certain percentage of your total spending and hitting that number. And generally, we're able to do that you know, across the network without without challenge. So it's, you know, you sort of opt in to a commitment level. That, there, there's a, there's a ramp-up time to that. And within that, there's still no requirement, you know, that any specific item, it's just a total dollar level going through the GPO. Jeff, have I said that accurately?
Yeah, pretty much so. The you your current agreement has an out for any reason at all. So you just have to give them a notice. The the Vizient agreement is exclusive, so you can only have one GPO and that would be Vizient. That's the only way that you'd be able to hit your committed volume numbers anyway. We're not going to put a timeframe on when you have to send a a notice to your old GPO. And I would recommend keeping them on for a while, just in case as a backup. The companies are not going to load two GPOs. The distributors are not going to load two GPOs. So it's going to be pretty cut and dry when we make that change. But I would, you know, there's no reason to sever it immediately. It would be something I would say would, you know, at the beginning of '26, when everything's, you know, tucked away, we've got it all done. Then and if there's any reason you've got an agreement over there that you absolutely have to have, we can work through that. So not not an issue.
And the 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 key thing here as we make the changes that you know, it's it's sort of a configuration change on the supplier's side. If if it's the exact same item, you know, it it's kind of silly that you're going to, that your pricing is going to change and improve with just a tweak in the system from GPO to GPO. But that is how it works. And, you know, so the the impact on the the impact on the staff for any item that is simply switching from GPO to GPO is nothing. And if there is a reason to consider changing a product, then that's something like Jeff mentioned that we'll work through during implementation. And we have flexibility to make sure that we're doing that carefully as opposed to ripping a band-aid.
Right, and you've you've got a lot of options. That's why we'll have to go through each of the product areas and and make decisions there. You have some alignments now that we could keep in place. But that might not be the best situation for you. So we'll we'll talk through all of that.
You'd work with our clinical team pretty closely to work through those.
Absolutely, yeah. A- any of the department directors, any of the committees, whatever we need to do to get samples in, you know, all that kind of good stuff. We've we've got that covered. So however your process works, we'll we'll go by that process.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate the information. Anyone have any questions about that? Kendra, do you have any questions about the Vizient GPO service?
No, it sounds like a great opportunity for savings.
I agree.
I think we could make it work.
Okay, yeah. So it's my understanding you have drafted or are working on a draft contract for us that we can preview and look at next week for for consideration at our regular board meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, we we have the contract with the Wyoming language with Vizient and our goal is to, you know, let you know what's coming, prepare you for that so that it's not, you know, sort of coming in blind. And Jeff, did Vizient give us any update? Earlier earlier today, it was with Vizient, but we didn't have it back yet. Any change there?
Right, we did hear back from Legal today and they're putting a rush on it. They've got a million things going on like everyone else, but I'm pushing them to try to get this thing done so we can get a six-one effective date on it. So hopefully, we will have something for you next week to 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 review.
Okay.
We'll get it.
I appreciate that.
I would just ask for an opportunity to review it as well, please.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate the information. I think we all do. Any opportunity we can find for savings right now is critical for us. So thanks for being here this evening and presenting.
Absolutely.
We'll look forward to receiving a contract to review.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You do the same. All right, let me get to my other screen. And we will move on to our next order of business, which is the Gustafson interim services contract. Greg, do you want to speak to us about this?
Yes, so Gene will serve as our interim case management director. The goal here is to give us the expertise that we need for inpatient case management and ultimately hopefully be able to build that department. The contract is structured that Gene would be able to work on-site, which I anticipate would be the initial implementation here in June, July, and then transition to more remote and be able to support with that growing of that of these skills internally. So this gets that that process going with Gene.
Okay, and if board members will remember, we discussed this last week. The bringing on of this contract, so. Are there any questions from board members in this regard?
None from me.
Thank you, Kendra.
None for me.
Okay. This is an action item if board members are considering the approval.
I would move to approve the case management contract for Gene Gustafson.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Kendra.
All second.
Second by Taylor. Thank you, Taylor. Are there any other concerns or questions from the board? I'll ask for a vote then. All in favor of the approval of the Gustafson interim services contract, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I think I got three. Motion carries. Next item of business is the insurance proposal provided.
Yes, so we met with, we've been working really hard and first off, I have to commend Jan for her hard work and and attention that she's put into filling out all of the many applications for for the various insurances that we're looking at for the hospital. So the schedule has a couple of the options that Teglers was able to come up with. And ultimately, the recommendation is a little bit of both. It's almost all, I'm trying to zoom in here. Yeah, yes, DRC is the the main one, except for there's one of them. Thank you, Jan. Is switched, but the total then is the 417. These policies were, right now, they take effect at different times of the year and we're chasing them when they happen. Teglers has been able to pull everything to a common renewal renewal date, which then gets us better pricing because we're able to say we're giving you our auto policy as well as well as our commercial policy. And so they pulled everything together. The action tonight would be to authorize Tanya to enter into these these policies. So that way we have insurance. And everything is set to take effect this Friday. And so I guess we need to clarify with Gina with Lena if that's still the appropriate date. And so there's been a couple of different insurance questions that we're chasing with some of the changes in the construction schedule. But we've been pushing for our handover, which was supposed to be on May 23rd.
Thank you, Craig. Lena, do you have anything to add to this regarding Greg's comments and the insurance policies?
I don't think so. It's been a little wishy-washy. Nobody wants to really commit one way or the other when we're asking these questions, but I think we're okay right now.
Is builder's risk included here? I know we were just discussing that this morning, so, okay.
And I will point out, so just so for full transparency, our current spend is at 325. And that's a rough number because one of the other things Jan has done a great job on is making sure that everything is included with all of the the pieces, some of our rental properties, making sure that we have absolutely everything 100% covered the way we should. And so that's the, there's been some changes throughout the year that are partial years. So it's roughly that 325 and going then with your 17. One other point I'll make, Teglers did an amazing thing for us in the the payment program. We'll be able to do monthly payments and they're not going to charge us the finance fee. That will save us about $50,000, which is pretty incredible. So I was ecstatic. So it's good for our cash flow as well as not having that finance charge.
That was my question. What are the questions that are being asked, I guess, that we're not really getting a definite answer on? I guess like you said, there were some questions that are still needing to be answered that nobody's
Oh, builder's risk.
Yeah.
With USDA.
Yeah.
Okay, we had some conversation with them this morning about when we will no longer need that and how long we have to carry it. So.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was missing that we needed, I guess.
We're trying to get clarification from their office and they can't give us clarification at the moment, so.
You want to mention that also that doesn't include the property, like the furniture's right, because we don't have that list from Damon yet. So that won't mean, you know, we'll go up a little when we have that list.
So it doesn't include contents coverage?
Correct. Yeah.
For the new facility.
Correct.
Okay. So that will be a definite add that we need to know what the contents are specifically before. Okay. Understood.
Okay, then.
But that can be added in at any point.
Yes, so that's where we've
Comprehensive plan.
Damon to give us the breakdown of all of the the items that we're buying because we know the what's being purchased for the hospital with the assigned dollar amounts. There's a couple of things that he's chasing that we're trying to get. So that way we can give that to the insurance company to say, here's every bed, every, you know, blood pressure monitor, all the pieces. And they can take that personal property contents and add that to this.
Okay.
Do you have a ballpark of that variation of those dollar amounts that would be potentially added?
I do not.
It's probably hard to come up with that at the moment without a comprehensive list.
Well, and just working in insurance that can fluctuate a lot.
Right.
I'm sure you guys will keep us in the loop once you receive all of that information and you'll provide it to us and the differences in the policy.
So there's some time crunch here, though, that I'm hoping that the board will provide you the authority to to enter into those policies before the next board meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
Can you explain why the time crunch? Like, are we having a policy that's expiring in between?
The policies have to take effect on Friday.
Okay.
This Friday?
Yes.
So they're going to have those updated tomorrow then, or?
Yes, so Teglers will be getting us everything.
They're prepared to go. And it's all been reviewed through Lena, correct? Lena, you've had time to review the policies and
No, we don't have, no, as soon as we get them, we'll send them.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, sorry for misunderstanding. Okay.
That's why this is all I have right now.
Sure. Sure.
So.
Okay. Questions, further questions from the board? Kendra, if you have any questions? Your area of expertise as well.
If if there's a, I can't see the attachments. I'm not sure if I logged in right. If there's attachments, I'm not seeing them. But one question I have is, does this include liability as well? Like for the premises liability?
Yes, general liability, professional liability, the DNO.
So it's everything that we know of so far except contents?
Except contents and malpractice.
Okay, okay.
Do you want me to list the the current coverage items to you, Kendra?
Sure, yeah.
Commercial auto, commercial property and equipment, umbrella, professional liability, general liability, DNO, fidelity crime, cyber and EMS package.
What's the limits on the the liability and then the umbrella?
The umbrella, 2 million.
Did you hear that? 2 million on the umbrella?
Is that enough? I mean, are we
Madam Chair, if I could interject routinely.
Yeah, go ahead, Lena.
Yeah, routinely in hospitals I represent, that's not even close to being enough.
Yeah.
We usually have umbrellas 10, 15, 20 million.
Yep.
Not a million.
That's what I'm thinking.
2 million, yeah.
I mean, I have, I have 2 million on my house. That's, that's why I ask.
What's the opportunity for implementing the coverage right away with the dates we need, but looking at increasing the the coverage?
Throw it back at them. I mean, they've been very responsive on things. So if there's something else that we would like, we can, we can make the changes.
Okay, you need it to go into effect by Friday, though.
So that's been, that's been the assumption I've been working on. So unless that has changed, then that's that's the the other piece that
I I agree, we need to get, we need to get the coverage in place. I mean, I am in favor of allowing Tanya to enter in the contracts on Friday, but I would like to see us increase the umbrellas. And if not by Friday, as soon as possible.
Is that a motion, Kendra?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Well, and we need the malpractice. What was the other two that you just said? Professional liability? There was two others that were missing.
Malpractice and then personal.
And I would, at some point.
And the builder's risk is not.
I know this is focused on the property, the the physical damage coverage for the the buildings. But when we were, we, I don't know if we're talking about credentialing tonight or if that's going to be next week, but.
That's next week.
I noticed that the, I think, and maybe someone correct me if I'm wrong, but that the malpractice insurance is limited at 1 million per claim. Is that right, too?
Yes.
That's pretty standard.
Is that pretty standard? Okay, that just.
Generally, it's 1 million and 3 million aggregate. That's, that is pretty standard for malpractice.
Okay, okay, good. That's, that's kind of what my question was.
Yeah, but you always want the hospital district to be more for vicarious liability claims. So you want, that's why you want that umbrella.
Okay.
You have to keep in mind in Wyoming, we don't have any caps on damages, unfortunately.
You just missed the first part of the. And so he was explaining the umbrella and the other one, which took equals 3 million. And all the policies they've ever done, this is how Trey from Tegler explained it, that there is some limits or something in Wyoming, according to him, that there's only been one other lawsuit that has awarded more than a $3 million.
But isn't the 3? The 3 million isn't general, is an aggregate, right? It's not a per claim.
Yeah, and Jan, I don't know who gave you that information, but that is inaccurate information.
That was Trey from Tegler, so that's, that's a reason why.
I've litig, I've litigated cases in the state of Wyoming for 21 years. There are no caps, no damage caps. And I've never, I've seen juries award way over what the insurance is because a jury cannot learn what your insurance coverage is when they award damages.
So what happens in that situation, Lena?
Then you're on, you're on the hook outside of insurance, yeah.
Okay, so we are in agreement, though. It sounds like that we need to get coverage implemented ASAP. And can we amend that motion, Kendra, to represent maybe that we go back and explore some options in a couple of these particular policies?
Yes, I, that would be good.
Okay.
Is Jan getting all of that?
She's working on it.
Okay.
Okay, so you're okay with the motion as stated earlier?
I I am.
With that amendment?
Yes, because we need to get coverage in place, obviously, right away. But we definitely need to go back and discuss the increased umbrella limits.
I agree. All second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from members of the board? Before I ask for a vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to the next item on the agenda under new business is the locum tenens client agreement. It within room physicians. Greg, you want to talk to us about this one?
Certainly. So this is the locum's arm of Apogee. And so the way this will work is if they are unable to source the permanent physicians in time for us, or if for some reason there was a need for someone to fill in from those permanent physicians, this agreement would kick in and those locums would come back. Whatever we spent dollar wise with under this agreement would then be deducted from what we owe Apogee. So this could still cost us more, but we're not be, we would not be paying both the Apogee income guarantee and this locum's agreement.
Is there any, right? Because we do end up paying more. I mean, is there something that says like they still have to, that they can't just continue?
Yeah, there's, there's a limit in the Apogee, right? Yeah.
Lena, have you had the, oh, sorry, Greg. I was just gonna ask if you'd had the opportunity to review this contract yet?
I have reviewed this one.
Okay, just want to make sure. Sorry, Greg, did you need to, okay.
I appreciate you double checking, Madam Chair. There's a lot of contracts right now.
I know, I know. Board members, any further questions about this one in particular? Is this, this is the amendment. Do we need to handle that one separately or is this part of? I'm just trying to figure that out. The next item. We have the client agreement and we have the amendment to the agreement.
Yes, you probably have to.
Handle them separately?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay. Any discussion from the board? Concerns?
I would motion to approve the locum's client agreement.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Taylor for approval of the client agreement with interim.
All second.
And a second by Ashley, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a vote then. All in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we have an amendment to the agreement dated May 8th. Oh, this is the medical management. Okay, sorry, I was pumping them together. Now I understand. So do you want to talk about this one at all, Greg?
Yeah, this is the, really the second half of it for Apogee to make sure that we don't pay both sides.
Okay, gotcha.
Mr. Brookner, did I review this one? I don't recall specifically.
Um, I thought you did.
It's a one page.
Yeah, it's a one. Page. Do you, do you want me to share my screen? So you can see it, Lena?
Will you just, will you just include in your motion pending legal review? So if you want to approve it, just pending legal review, that would be totally fine. And I'll just double check just to be safe.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any action from board members on this amendment? Or do you have questions, concerns? That we need to clarify?
Please direct bill amendment pending legal review.
Thank you, Ashley.
All second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve this amendment pending legal review. Is there any discussion, any further questions? Okay, I will ask for a vote then for the motion on the table to approve the Apogee interim physician's amendment. Pending legal review. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have one further item of new business, and that is the Blue Cross Blue Shield instant, institutional reimbursement notice.
Yes, this is the, we missed this last week. And so last week we approved the actual contract for Blue Cross Blue Shield. This is the important page that says how much we get paid. And so this, we just missed this last weekend or as we were processing everything. And so it's the the actual rate sheet, which is the important.
Only one where we actually get paid, right?
So it's a 25% deduction. It says it there in the inpatient.
25% less of what, than what we're.
So remember when we did the Charge Master approval? I told you no one in the history of the hospital will ever pay that. And so we will send them an invoice for our Charge Master. And then they will pay 75% of that. Yeah, and then.
I mean, is that, that will be.
Yes, so, yeah, so the it's really, it's hard, it's hard to say what's typical. And that's where, why we put so much work into the Charge Master to make sure that our starting point was was equitable. And so we had Coro do that analysis for us, comparing it so that way we weren't undercharging or overcharging. Blue Cross Blue Shield requested that we send them that Charge Master. And so as far as a percent of fees, it makes sense. But and that's where we've been using Andy Working to help push us and be able to make sure that we're getting the the right pieces there. So the example that they give you here is because they limit our ability to do price increases. And so they show you the formula on how we would do increases. Andy really went to bat for us. He was trying to get an exclusion. So that way in next summer, when you're in, we could reset our Charge Master. They wouldn't go for that. They had the pricing power here, not us. So even, and that's where the question was, but I think where your head's going, what if we made a mistake? And, you know, undercharge something. And so it's just that ability to to fix it. They said they have a mediation process that we could go through to fix, you know, particular charge codes, but.
But at the end of the year, this is the, right, so.
Right, and so we can raise our prices. Yeah, we can raise our prices once a year.
Yeah.
And so.
So Blue Cross Blue Shield is obviously a really good insurance provider here. Are there others? You know, we have, we talked about one or two.
So last week we also did first choice, which is Aetna. Yeah, United is being difficult. They don't want to recognize our provisional hospital license. That's how Wyoming does business. And so if you choose to sell insurance in Wyoming, there again, Andy's being very, you know, defensive of of our interest and trying to work with them. So we're trying to to work through those, those mediation processes and negotiation, but we're not. They would basically say, so talk to us once you're enrolled in Medicare. And we're like, okay, so what are we doing in the meantime? Initially, it would force anyone that shows up with insurance that we have not contracted, they'll be out of network and have those out of network charges, which it's not good for the patient. It's not good for us because it's harder for us to collect. Yeah, so. But it's wonderful that we get Blue Cross Blue Shield across the finish line.
Yeah, that's, that's big.
Do we know what percentage they are of our insured patients? Have a statistic there we know.
Uh, so everyone's guessing. We haven't opened the.
That's a big what if.
Yeah, so we think it's going to be strong, like even just the commercial payers in general, but, yeah.
Thanks for the information, Greg. Any questions? Any further questions from the board? In this regard?
None for me.
None for me.
Okay. All right. Well, again, this is an action item if someone would like to make a motion.
I would motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Wyoming Constitutional Reimbursement Contract.
Thank you, Taylor.
All second.
Second by Ashley, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Can we add, can we add a provision pending legal review, please?
Yes, ma'am. And will you amend your motion?
Madam Chair, I amend my motion to include pending legal review.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table. Does that second still stand, Stan? Okay, any further discussion? I'll ask for a vote then. All in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that puts us at the end of our business portion of the meeting. The remainder of our meeting will be executive session for the purposes of executive contract discussions and legal. So if someone could make a motion to that effect for us to be able to move into executive, I would be appreciative.
Would motion to enter in executive session for executive contract review and legal.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify so.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I do not anticipate that we will have any further action taken after executive. So for those of you who have joined in, thank you and have a, an excellent evening.
I wonder if you want some chocolate over here? Tell your wife you love her. I guess your son, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Any.
Your shop policy.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure who our guest is, but you'll have to step out of our meeting now, please.
Madam Chair, if you're the organizer, you should have the ability to to remove someone if needed.
It's not letting me. I'm struggling to figure out how to do that here. Kendra and Lena, we are going to log out momentarily and come back in, okay?
Okay.